Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, April 28th. It is 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie School Board. Board of Education is a regular meeting. We are today at Olentangie High School. With that, I will call the meeting to order. So with that, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco.
President.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Dr. Wise.
Here.
Mr. O'Brian.
Is that everybody?
Everybody's here.
All right, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. Right, we have no amendments to the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so can I have a motion, please?
Some of.
I'll stop.
We have a second?
I will.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brian.
Yes. All right, so Board President's report, I'll be brief because we do have a full agenda tonight. Tonight is a great night because we get to see what I call the best of the best, both academically and athletically. It's student recognition and staff recognition night, so it's always a great night to get to see a lot of the success that we've enjoyed as a district, both from the student and staff perspective. So that is fantastic. Mr. Dabberco, I believe you had a few things you wanted to talk about?
Yes, a couple items of note from the school advocacy committee. Of course, on April 7th, the OLSD School Advocacy Committee hosted the General Assembly Candidates' Forum at Liberty High School. Senator Brenner, Heather Swiger, Beth Lear, Rachel Morocco, and Luis Valentine were there and shared their perspective and their vision of what Ohio schools should look like. This is posted, I believe, on the district website, my board Facebook page and the committee Facebook page as well. The issues they covered were fair funding, backpack bill HB 616, guns in schools, access to mental health services, and different curriculum issues facing Ohio schools. That was the first thing I wanted to mention. The second thing is more details about the Ohio Fair School Funding Summit. Olentangie has taken a leadership role in the state of Ohio to advocate for fair school funding. The financial impact on our district is significant. We've gotten, we're very thankful to get commitments from legislators. Speaker Cup, Mr. Patterson, I better read from the list to make sure I don't miss any. Rick Carfagna, of course, will be there. He did a great job last fall, historical overview of school funding. And we're really excited to have the Honorable Patrick J. T. Berry will lead off the event by making important connections between public education, the Intel project that was announced very recently. So that is the Ohio Fair School Funding Summit, and more information will be coming. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from other board members on committees? Any updates? No? All right, we'll move right into the presentation item, so item six on the agenda. So this is the recognition of Olentangie students for academic and extracurricular achievement. So I will turn the microphone over to Dr. Wise, who will take us through that process.
Tonight's meeting is a special one for us because it is the evening we as a board get to recognize the students and staff members for their outstanding achievements in co-curricular, extracurricular, and athletic activities. Many athletic and academic competitions are scheduled for later this spring, so we will recognize those accomplishments at a separate board meeting in June. We are excited to celebrate some of our students, coaches, and advisors on their outstanding accomplishments this evening. As I announce your name, please walk to the stage to receive your award and have your photo taken with Board President Kevin O'Brian and Superintendent Mark Rafe. These photos will be delivered to you via your individual schools in a few weeks. Earlier this year, we had the honor of celebrating our district's national merit semifinalists from all four district high schools. We are proud to announce that each of those semifinalists obtained the rank of national merit finalists. We will begin our ceremony by honoring the 2022 national merit finalists from Olentangie schools. From Olentangie Liberty High School, Cal Burkey. From Olentangie High School, Alex Oberischen. From Olentangie Berlin High School, Aiden Jensen. From Olentangie Orange High School, Nikitha Vimretti. Corinne Hazel. Congratulations to all our national merit finalists. The following students from Olentangie High School participated in the Health Occupation Students of America International Leadership Conference and achieved first place in community awareness. Joining us in recognizing, Rachel Matthew. Vishal Vivek. Oh, okay, is that tennis? We now turn to recognizing our phenomenal student athletes. Many students have received individual state-level honors in their sport this year. The board congratulates the following students. From Olentangie Liberty High School, Jamison Brooker. First Team All-State, First Team All-District, and District Player of the Year, Girl Soccer. Carter's being recognized for state champion, Boys Bowling. From Olentangie High School, Dani Lieper, Second Team All-State Boys Soccer. Anna McGrath, Seventh Place Girl Swimming State Tournament. Jana Spawn, OCC Girls Volleyball Player of the Year, Cardinal Division. From Olentangie Berlin High School, Ella Franz, State Tournament Girls Tennis Qualifier. From Olentangie Orange High School, Alicia Coleman, Fourth Place State Tournament, Girls Jay Gerard, Second Place State Tournament, Uneven Parallel Bars, Girls Gymnastics. Keegan Knapp, Fifth Place State Tournament, Boys Wrestling. Talia Mitchell, Fifth Place State Tournament, Girls Wrestling. Sakith Redrawoju, Sixteenth Place Cross Country State Tournament. Lexi Simmons, Fifth Place State Tournament, Girls Wrestling. Our student athletes are led by fantastic coaches and mentors. Many have received team and coaching honors this year. From Olentangie Liberty High School, join me in congratulating, Coach Chris Allen led the Olentangie Liberty Girls Soccer Team as they claimed the titles of district champions. Coach Allen was also honored as the OCC Coach of the Year. From Olentangie High School, Girl Soccer, under the direction of Matt Evans, became the Girl Soccer District Runner-Up, and he was named OCC Girl Soccer Coach of the Year, Coach Calvin Higdon led the Girl Swim Team Seventh Place Finish at the State Tournament. We honor Ken Whalen tonight as he led the OHS Boys Cross Country Team to the title of From Olentangie Orange High School, Brian Nicola coached the Orange High School Girls Wrestling Team to a Central Southeast District Championship, as well earning the Dual Champions Title at the Ohio High School Wrestling Coach Association State Tournament. Congratulations to all the ex... What is it?
He's the national merit finalist from Olentangie Orange High School.
Okay, we have another person, student, from the national merit finalists from Olentangie Orange High School, Rusheel Lincolnchetti. All right, on behalf of the entire board, I would once again like to congratulate the many outstanding students, coaches, and advisors recognized this evening. We are proud of your accomplishments.
No. It's my walk-up music. We're good? All right, thank you very much. So, again, I want to extend my congratulations to all of our students and coaches and athletes that were here and extend that same congratulations to all the families that were able to join us. Very, very proud to have the board honor all of those outstanding students. I'll continue that with honoring some other students in my superintendent's report here. We have a Global Scholars Program here in Olentangie. It's a three-year program that our students choose to take part of, and we're very proud of the 16 students here who just went above and beyond to layer that Global Scholars Distinctions on their diplomas, and they have graduated from our Global Scholars Program. So congratulations to all of those students. This was a big week for our DECA programs, and our DECA programs are as good as any DECA programs in the entire country. All four of our high schools qualified to attend the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta this weekend. We had three of the groups move on in the final competition. So Renee P. Nolan R. Rohan competed in the Community Giving Finals, Luke Binger, one of the top scorers, and in the Entrepreneurship Event, and Maren C. finished in the top 20 in Apparel and Accessories. So congratulations to those outstanding DECA students. As you all know, we had our One Community Conference last Saturday. The conference featured six of our students doing keynote presentations. I know many of you were able to attend. It was an outstanding event, so I again congratulate our Equity and Inclusion Team for their work in that regard. Had a great opportunity last Friday to spend the day with Maren, same DECA student. She's a junior at Berlin. The Berlin Athletic Boosters raffled off the opportunity for a student to be the superintendent for the day. I didn't ask her what it cost her parents, but it was an incredible day. We gave Maren a tour of the Olentangie administrative offices and introduced her around to everybody in the building. We did a redistricting simulation. It was really interesting. She had some really interesting insight on redistricting. We took a tour of Berlin Middle School. She had an interview with This Week News, and she got to test our mass notification system and sent a special message to her parents on our mass notification system. So, you know, it was incredible. I called her mom later in the day and thanked her that she donated the money to the boosters for the raffle because I really felt like she gave me a gift, that opportunity to spend all day with one of our great students. It just was, Mr. Wright and I did the redistricting simulation with her, Mrs. Davis spent a lot of time with us. It just was as fun a day as I've had in a long, long time. So I really thank Maren and her parents for that.
What else happened that day, Mr. Rafe?
We, I didn't want to say that you came to lunch with us.
No.
At Kinsale because then the other board members would ask, why didn't I get invited to lunch at Kinsale?
Because I had to, no, something big happened that day.
Oh, yes, I had my third grandchild that morning.
Not me going to lunch.
That really topped the day, yes. That did top the day.
It's our only time we've had lunch together.
Yeah, I know, I know. It was, yeah, that did top the day. So hopefully you've seen this come out. U.S. News and World Reports has released their rankings of the best high schools in the state and nation. And once again, our schools are ranked among the top 10 in central Ohio. Olentangie High School was fourth, Orange High School was sixth, Liberty High School was eighth. The rankings are calculated using the average of the three previous years of state data. So as you know, Berlin opened in 2018, so some of their data wasn't available to go into this ranking cycle. So we expect next year Berlin will be ranked in the top with our other three high schools. So just a great honor to have them ranked so high. They're top 3% of the nation in terms of overall rankings, so congratulations. And I always say, whatever the results that we get in high school, they're the culmination of all the hard work that our elementaries and staff and our middle school staffs put into to get those kids ready for the high school, and the rankings bear out. So I hope all of our staff shares in those high rankings for our high schools. I want to give a brief update on redistricting because, and we're going to give a more robust presentation at a future board meeting, but I'm not going to, I want to continue, I want to say this early and often, we will be redistricting in Olentangie here very soon. Obviously, we open Berlin Middle School in 2023. We have two elementary schools, Heritage and Liberty Tree, that are significantly overcrowded. We are discussing whether or not we have to look at overflow, which means that at a certain point in time, anybody who moves into those attendance areas may have to go to a different school than their assigned school. It's something we haven't had to do here in a long time, but quite honestly, it's my fault because I didn't take enough people out of Heritage when we did the last redistricting to try to minimize it as best we can. You know, it could have taken more. And Heritage, or Liberty Tree, has just seen a couple neighborhoods that the families that have moved into those have a lot more kids than we would have anticipated. They're kind of outliers in our normal housing yield. So more than likely, we will do the middle school redistricting, obviously, through, start in the fall and finish it in December, but we're going to have to implement some elementary redistricting as a part of that to balance enrollment. And then obviously, we're being mindful of how we plan for Elementary '17. So if we do make a change in elementary for next, not for next school year, for the following school year, '23, '24, when we open Berlin Middle School, we will, we wouldn't, you know, what we're trying to be mindful of is that we don't want to have to move somebody twice. So if they do get moved as part of the next redistricting, we'll lock them in for the foreseeable future. But, you know, the last redistricting we did was for Shell Meadows, obviously, and it didn't affect a lot of our buildings. There is a likelihood that many buildings could be affected in this redistricting because we're going to try to balance out enrollment, especially and also with feeder patterns. So, and even if you don't get moved out of a school, your school could be affected by redistricting because you could have kids coming to your school. So, you know, I'm going to be talking about redistricting, as I said, early and often here for the foreseeable future. Some action items on our agenda, we have four administrative appointments. As you know, we're adding elementary assistant principals to all the eight, excuse me, eight remaining schools that we don't have full-time assistants. So these are the last three that we'll be hiring. Angela Ballard's going to Glen Oak Elementary School, Jody Clemens is going to Cheshire Elementary School, and Jody, I think Jody's here with us. Hi, Jody, welcome. Thanks for being here. Sarah Kirby's going to Johnny K. Corners Elementary School, all those elementary assistants. And Mr. Gary Young is moving over from Olentangie Orange High School to be a supervisor in our Pupil Services Department. We are finishing up the principal appointment for Orange High School. We'll have final interviews early next week and have that Orange High School principal on our next board agenda for your approval. This is probably one of the best action items we do all year. We'll be approving the class of 2022 seniors for graduation. There are over 1,700 student names in that exhibit, and it's just, again, amazing to me that we have that many kids graduating from our district, moving on to the next great phase of their lives. Mr. Wright will be making a presentation on the district calendar here shortly. That's on here for approval. And then three business office items, the tap for the sewer. So again, another milestone in the development of Berlin Middle School. We're doing a parking lot expansion at the West Transportation Center. Obviously, we keep adding buses as we continue to grow. That $480,000 is being paid for by a donation from the Schottenstein Real Estate Group as part of a TIF agreement with Liberty Township, so we're very thankful of that. We initially had planned that as part of our 2020 bond package, so that'll free up, that money will free up opportunities to do some other projects in the district. And then we have the extended learning areas at Olentangie and Liberty High School, which again, were part of the 2020 bond package. So those are all important action items for your consideration. And then finally, our next round of important dates, we have our senior awards and scholarship night, May 2nd, at the Bridgewater Conference Center, which again, you're all welcome to attend. This is kids from all four of our high schools receiving scholarships that are awarded all throughout the district, and so we're very proud to honor those students and their families. We have two more senior awards presentations coming up at Olentangie and Orange High School, and then our next board meeting, May 12th. With that, take any questions you might have.
I just wondered the exact number of graduates.
Pardon me?
I keep seeing over 1,700, and I didn't want to count the pages.
Well, Mrs. Patrick, unfortunately, I don't want to say. Technically, as of this minute, there's like 1,755 seniors.
That's what I wanted.
And if I say exactly, I don't want to jinx anything.
I hope I didn't.
So we're, as former high school principals, we're always hopeful they can get to the end, but, you know, it's, they still have to pass, some of them still have to pass some classes.
They do.
So, and you have one, right?
I do.
Very exciting, congratulations.
Provided he passes his math class.
That's right. I'm sure we are.
Any questions for Mark?
No, sir.
No?
No.
All right, thank you.
So for those who may not know, so Madison is in the Treasurer's Department. He's pinch hitting for Mrs. Hatfield. It's still out with her knee surgery, and it is her birthday tonight, so.
It is her birthday.
Happy birthday to this happy, I'm sure she's listening, and Madison Rowland.
So Mrs. Hatfield is out moving around. We had breakfast with her this morning to celebrate her birthday. We kidnapped her and got her out of the house. So she was in pretty good spirits. I'll be relatively brief with the Treasurer's Report here. We will have a handful of action items that we're going to be bringing forward. We're going to have amended appropriations to be approved. We're going to have amended appropriations to be approved, along with the board meeting minutes from both March meetings in accordance with O R C compliance requirements. We will have some donations for the board to approve and acceptance. We're always very thankful for our community. Mrs. Griffith, the other Assistant Treasurer, touched on the bond issuance at the last board meeting. Tonight, as part of our action items, you will have the actual resolution to approve the sale of those bonds. And then we have an O R C 5705 payment. I'll touch a little bit on that. First off, our donations, we want to thank you again, our community very much. The Olentangy Athletic Boosters have three up here for supplemental coaching, for I believe all the spring sports. Next, we have, I believe it was a donation of supplies and materials, safety and alcohol wipes from A C I Industries, J and J Sales. And then finally, on our donations, we have a PTO donation at Orange Middle School to upgrade their sign-out front, to go from a letterboard to a digital sign. So they're able to easily update it. Bond, there we go. The bond resolution, again, as Mrs. Griffith had brought up at the last meeting, this is the third and final segment of the 2020 voted authority. We elected to issue the debt over three offerings in an attempt to temper interest rates, and our estimated savings of doing that from our municipal advisors is $4.2 million over the life of the debt. And that just had to do with interest rate fluctuations over the last few years. And on the slide, you can see that's actually 2.3% of the approved package. So we're able to actually stretch some of that debt service a little bit better. Let's see what else I have on my notes. For the debt, once the bond resolution is finalized, we'll finalize the offering statement. We move into updated ratings with the ratings agency, the better rating, the better your interest rate is. Once we do that, we'll get our pricing and then we'll sell the bonds, all that. Hopefully, it'll be done inside of the next six to eight weeks and get Elementary 17 up and off the ground. Last item I have here, just as an update, let's get back, I don't have a slide for this one. We met with the Budget Subcommittee a couple of weeks ago to review our upcoming general fund budget. We meet with the Full Finance and Audit Committee next Monday, where they will go through more of a finalized draft of our five-year forecast in anticipation of presentations to the board. That is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Any? No? No?
Okay, thank you guys very much.
All right, thank you.
I did want to, I'm sorry, I missed Ms. Ballinger, one of our new assistant principals. I can't, can't quite see, I was told she's here.
Is she here?
Randy? Say hello. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is public participation. I don't believe we have any.
Nope.
Public participation, is that true? All right. Okay, we will now move into the first discussion item, that is Mr. Wright, our Chief of Administrative Services, talk about the 2324 district calendar.
Good evening, everyone, and I do want to apologize that Mrs. Ballinger was missed. Mr. Wright has people that are supposed to take care of that. I have people that are supposed to take care of that. I corrected Mr. Peters, letting him know he's a person, I need to help take care of that. So we have fixed that mistake. Mrs. Ballinger, welcome. All right, well, thank you for this opportunity to come back. I don't have a graphic for you. You do have the draft calendar in your support documentation. I do want to share some of the feedback that we received. We used our Thought Exchange platform to send out a link and opportunities for our community to provide feedback. We did have 668 people, staff and community members, who engaged with the calendar. There were 229 different opinions or thoughts shared about that, and then 5,711 ratings. And so with that information, I went through and spent time looking at the top 30 thoughts to look for the themes that seemed to resonate as the most often ranked and starred on a scale of one to five. We do have some feedback that we continue to get, and I know it's conversations we have from time to time. There are, there is a group of our community who still think we start too early in the school year, as the third Thursday in August. There are others who, while not part of this conversation, use the platform to tell us that our school day starts too early, and I know that that's a conversation we've had in the past, but we do want to acknowledge that we still receive that feedback, so that's information that you want to, to look at. Another theme that came forward is we do have a, I would say, a growing portion of our community who provide feedback that is requesting us to consider the Monday after the Easter holiday as a day off. It just, it has not worked that way in our calendars, so we have not looked at that in the past, but I want, again, I wanted to share that that was information. We did have one error early that got a lot of traffic. When we sent out, sent out the survey, there was a little bit of a typo in it and it did not. When we asked people to identify their, their category, it neglected parents working outside the home. So we fixed that, but we did get a lot of feedback early. So by the time we caught it, we'd already gotten a lot of thoughts. So we apologize for that error, but we did make sure we could account for those that work outside the home. And then the last, and we know it was probably the most unique thing we did on this calendar, was our winter break, because of the, where it falls and the day of the week, the two major holidays over the winter break, it just didn't lend itself to an appropriate, what we would call typical, which is two weeks off that would encapsulate both of the major holidays and then get us back on a Monday start time. Since the holidays start on a Monday in the 2324 calendar, we felt what was most appropriate and likely most aligned with the business world was our Wednesday-to-Wednesday break. And again, it, it's not typical, but I think with the, the way the holiday falls, we think it's most advantageous for our families and it is a consideration around, not undue constraints around childcare. So we, we do hear the, the feedback that it is not our typical, but we did not think adding two more days off at the start of break or going for a full week after the New Year's holiday was appropriate for our families. So we, that's the way we presented that draft. I do want to share that we had a lot of feedback from people that shared some things they really liked. They really liked how we added a fall break and we combined a couple of our Dakota Day and Teacher Work Day to make it a four-day weekend. We got a lot of feedback that our people appreciate us pairing our professional development days with the natural holidays to create some of these four-day weekend, Fridays off with a Monday holiday. So our, our families did share that. And they continue to like how we structure our Thanksgiving and spring breaks. And then there was a suggestion within that for us to consider, and we have gotten this before, to maybe consider a full week off at Thanksgiving. It is not the practice of many districts, but it, it's something that we will continue to study and look at to see. So with that information, we did not have a significant change in mind for this. So the draft that was presented to you in February is the draft that we are presenting to you tonight for your feedback. Any questions? Or I'm sorry, for your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? On the calendar? No? No?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Based on that presentation, you can't question or not whether or not we actually read every piece of feedback. It was all considered.
All right, the, sorry, the next discussion item is the Technology Plan Update. Mr. Sexton, our Director of Technology.
Thanks for the opportunity to give you an update. It's always, always good to be back at O H S, you know? So many fond memories of this school and the teachers that, you know, kind of inspired me to be an educator, so I always love coming back here, so always find, find reasons to visit. So, so, so this is an overview or a trip down memory lane of what we've done over the, gosh, six or seven years. So it's kind of, kind of have all of that aspect and then some, you know, where we're at and some future projects. So, so a quick overview, we're going to go over some key priorities. We're going to go over a review of the department. So what, what's the makeup of the department? Review of major projects, a device update, and then future projects. So, so a few of our key priorities or tenets. Collaboration. We always want to collaborate with whoever. So we're, we're always engaging other departments, whether that's transportation, business office, curriculum, food service, whoever it is, and of course, the buildings in whatever we do. Classroom support. So when a ticket comes into us, we always ask, how does that ticket impact the classroom? And if it does, if it's an immediate impact, we stop what we're doing and we send somebody. And of course, online safety. Students, number one priority, all right? When they're online, give them the safest environment possible. And then last but not least, a reliable and fast network. We don't have a good infrastructure, all these devices, you know, it really, it's, it's all for naught if you don't have good connections. So overview of the department. So right now, we currently have, it's broken up into four different teams. We have the Service Desk, that's the folks that call in, teachers, parents, even students will call in or submit tickets. So that's the front, first line of defense. We have the Network Team, that's the folks behind the scenes, keeping everything running, all the servers, all the, all the wireless, you know, the thing that all those devices connect back to. And then we have the Security Team, right? They're constantly monitoring the firewalls, intrusion detection, and what's happening online. Not just students, but all, for all of our devices. And then last but not least, Instructional Technology, Jim Fury's group, and they are in the classrooms, elevating and taking technology to the next level. They're teaching the teachers how to use the tools that we're providing to provide a better experience for students. And so all of that collies up to, after our summer hiring is done, that'll equal out to 29 staff members between those four teams. All right, so, all right, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I really want to touch on all these. This is, they're in somewhat chronological order, not, not all of them, but for the most part, this kind of goes in the order of events. And hopefully you'll see, as I go through them, how they build upon each other. One can't happen without the other. So starting off, the very beginning, centralized servers. What does that mean? Well, imagine every building, every building had its own server and only those people could log in within that building. So the challenge of traveling staff, different logins, remembering what they were as you go building to building. So it was a real challenge for staff. So what we did was, we brought that all back into our data center at Shanahan. So that unified our logins, all right? So we had one source of truth for our logins. We talk a lot of that with our Treasury and E Finance, but it's also true with, with this as well. One login, one username, one password makes it easy for staff, but it's also great for security. Something happens, we need to disable account, we disable it and it takes their access away from just about everything. We also updated My L S D. So I say updated because in its infancy, My L S D had a couple icons, I think Power School and Brain Pop, so very, very few applications were actually in it. So what we did was, we kind of took it to the next level and we looked at all of our applications that we had and we put those, we transplanted those into My L S D. So it went from a couple icons to, gosh, in some cases, 30 or 40 different icons for all different kinds of, of apps. Single Sign-On, we turned on at the same time. So the apps where, what Single Sign-On is, is you log in once, you click on applications and it takes you right in. It says, oh, you're Rob, and it'll take you into your email or whatever. And you guys probably use that today and are familiar with it. So way back when, we kind of tied all those things together. Not much longer, we kind of saw the writing on the wall with First Class, our email system, and it was time to, to move to a more modern, more well-known system. So we moved from First Class to Office 365 at the same time. Again, unifying the logins, bringing everything together. Not much later, we replaced the network. All of it. Every single switch, every connection, every wireless. And we really did that for reliability because we were getting inundated. We looked at our tickets, what was, what was happening? And we would have entire wings of buildings, you know, up and down depending on power and, and different issues would happen. So it really was a, was a challenge to keep everything up and running because, because of the age of the network. So it was time. So replacing that, we worked, in this next one, the Inventory System, that was a joint effort with, with Treasury. So they wanted a better way, a more efficient way of going through and taking inventory throughout. So they could go take their barcode scanners and go through the buildings, use our barcodes, our asset tags and click through and record everything in a central spot. Okay? Probably one of the most boring one on the list, and batteries, like really? Like why? What's the big deal about that? Well, as you guys know, the power fluctuates all the time. It'll be a sunny day, we'll lose power for whatever reason. So think about the classroom. Every blip, every blink would shut everything down, the wireless, everything would have to reboot. And so what we did was, we added batteries at all locations, right? And tried to give them an hour to an hour and a half of runtime. So when we put that network in, we added that in there. So if it does go out, really, it doesn't impact them at all, other than they don't have lights, all right? All the Chromebooks will work, teachers will continue to work, and the wireless will stay up for about an hour, and more importantly, the phones, all right? So if we needed, somebody needed to call out or do anything. So usually, that hour to hour and a half is, is enough for the power to come back on, all right? And at our data center, we added big ones. So we had a lot of little small ones, but we added big ones to accommodate for all the servers that were in there. And then we implemented teacher laptops. And this was the star of the transformation of the classroom, right? So instead of that desktop being in front of the classroom, hooked up the projector, stationary, we gave the teachers the ability to move, move around. We gave them the touch capabilities. We gave them pens so they can walk around, make notes and do the things that they need to do or, or things that didn't limit them in the things that they wanted to do. We wanted to give them that capability. Moving on, there's only, there's only 23 more of these, so. Diverse fiber paths. And I mentioned there, no district funds. And what that means is, so, so we would have, on occasion, the network would go down. Something would happen. A line would get cut. And there was one line, so if, if it was east-west, there was one line that went from Shanahan over to Liberty. Okay? When that one line went down, Liberty, the whole west end would be cut off. No internet, whatever. So we saw that at a single point of failure as, as a problem. We would also, if we lost a building, you know, let's say we, Liberty Middle went down, all right? We would lose, wind up, run, and then anything downstream from that. Okay? Tyler Run, side of Ridge, all right? So what we did was, we used our E-Rate funds from the network that we got back from our network purchase, and we used those funds to build, think of it like 270, right? It's like the outer belt. So we kind of built around. So we kinda built around, and we built redundancy into the buildings. So if we lost a building, we only lost that one, right? Lost a power outage, or something that was cut line, whatever. And then, if that line did go down, buildings had diverse paths into them. So if one line was cut here, it would just reroute the network out the other way, okay? So it's still possible for a building to go down, it's just not very probable, okay? Around the same time, we increased the bandwidth. So I know at home, I think I have standard internet, 250 meg from Spectrum, alright? So, you know, okay, internet. Well, imagine back then, we had 500. We just had double what we have, what I have now at my home, okay? For the entire district. So what we had to do was restrict what was happening online, streaming, right? A lot of great resources that teachers would use would be cut off, because we didn't have the bandwidth to do it. So we started that increase. So there were a lot of incremental increases along this time, but now, we went from 500 to 10,000, okay? And I'll touch a little more about on that, about where we get our internet. You know, I mentioned, you know, before the network went down, when the network went down, we'd lose a wing, right? Before we replaced the network. This next one, network awareness and alerts. When that wing would go down, the first warning we would have, or indication that it went down, was a teacher calling. Hey, we don't have internet here, what's going on? So we put a district-wide alert system, so that anytime anything goes down, we get a text message, we get an alert. So in many cases, we're walking into a building, and the secretary's like, hey, we were getting ready to call you. You know, this, you know, we don't have internet in the fifth grade wing. Well, yep, we're here to take care of that. So really helped with our support, and again, it goes back to the classroom, having better response times and taking care of those kind of things. A little bit later, we added a generator, alright? So we added those batteries, and once the batteries were dead at Shanahan, at this point, internet was over, alright? The connections, the phones, were done, alright? So we added a generator at Shanahan. So power goes out, generator kicks on, things keep moving. Fully automated account creation for staff and students. So talked about those unified logins. Well, again, back in the day, right? Not that long ago, we were creating a lot of these things manually, or feeding spreadsheets into systems, alright? So I still continue, consider that a manual process. So what we did was, we automated it, not just for students, but for staff. So what was our source of truth back then? It was the HR system, PD Express, we used that, and anytime somebody was added, it would create the account for them to log in, their email, and all of this, and any others. Same for students. The source of truth was Power School. They'd get registered, they'd get added to Power School, then the system would pick them up and add it. And we did it for, not just that, but we had it for any system that a manual creation was needed. So it really helped to make us more efficient. One roster. And that plays off, the one roster for student rostering, that plays off of the automation of the accounts, right? So great, the kids can log in, but what about all those online applications that they're using, okay? Are we feeding them spreadsheets? Are we adding them manually? And we really ran into issues where some buildings were creating accounts, we were creating accounts, you know, it was kind of a mess. So we implemented one roster, and so now, when we have an application, we just say, okay, what building's using this? We can even go down to the class level, alright? And this is Smith at XYZ School. You know, we add them, and just that class bought it. Okay, well, we can go and roster just them, alright? And most of the major players in the online education app world has adopted this. This is a worldwide standard, so most are on board with that. The next one, transition from paper to online forms for parents. I know many of you, kids or parents, you know, and mine, you know, I had to fill them out every year, and I'm like, we gotta, we gotta do something about this. We gotta, you know, it's, this was brought up roughly around 2018, and you know, it's like, it's time. So we took an existing system and kind of customized it a little bit for our needs and tailored that. So we implemented online forms for parents. And, you know, not a ton of emails saying, this is awesome, but, you know, enough to know that it really had an impact for them. They don't have to fill out these forms, you know, in triplicate. And around this timeframe, this was the beginning of, moving on here, beginning of streaming, athletic and academic events, alright? So, and this was all student-driven. These are students that wanted to go into broadcasting, or wanted to try it out, alright? So for those that wanted to do that, it was great. Football, basketball, on the sports side, but we even were able to broadcast some plays, musicals, and things like that. So it was really nice. And I mean, I think, you know, coming up, we have all the clapouts coming, and the graduations, so all the, it's time for the elementaries to reaching out to us and saying, you know, hey, how can we bring this out to, you know, parents that can't get off work, or Grandma and Grandpa? So it's a great thing that we're able to offer them. Print management system, again, not the most exciting thing in the world, right? But what we were seeing is a lot of waste, right? You guys have probably all been in the schools, maybe not, you probably haven't seen this recently, but if you were there several years ago, you would see that blue bin next to the copier, alright, of all the waste, alright? So we put this print management system in to try to eliminate that waste, right? And we thought we would see some pretty good savings year one, but in year one, we saw a 10 million copies saved in one year. And the way it works is, you know, teacher's in a classroom, she prints something to one of the copiers, doesn't immediately come out, which, you know, back in the day, someone could just grab it, accidentally walk away with it. They go, they scan their badge, and then what they printed comes out. It follows them wherever they go, right? If they're a traveler, and they printed that Tyler Run, but then they have to go to Windup Run, and like, oh, I printed that, and I forgot. Well, no big deal. They just go to the copier at Windup Run, scan it, and it follows them to where they're going, so. And then there's a security aspect that too. So if you print anything sensitive, you have the confidence that that won't walk away either, so. Big savings. COVID, kind of, the COVID years, the gray, the gray years, as I call them, those kinda threw off our stats, because we had one full year of this, and then, so I'm excited to see, once we get back to normal, what our savings, you know, can be in the long run. Unified system for all devices, alright? One system to rule them all, okay? One system to handle all of our mobile devices, the imaging of our laptops, the deployment of apps for any device, Mac, PC, doesn't matter. So along with that, came this new help desk system. So it was kind of a module to that system. So again, it was linked to a device. So if I was a teacher, and I kept having the same problem, I could see the history of what was happening in that ticket system. So, well, you just got a lemon, alright? And maybe we need to replace it. So a lot of data that we were using to analyze. How am I doing on time? I'm talking a lot, but trying to get through these.
Yeah, you can hit some highlights.
Speed it along, I got it, I got it, okay, alright. So added two additional data centers, that was part of our disaster recovery plan. We lose Shanahan, can we keep doing business? Okay? So we've added those. The answer is yes, we can. We can bring up servers from Shanahan to, you know, one of the other data centers, either Orange or Liberty. We increased capacity, we have to keep adding more and more space. Students are creating things, we need a place to put it. The first internet connections, this is a big one, because if we lost internet at Shanahan, it was it. So what we did was, we have one connection at Shanahan, that's 5,000, I mentioned 10,000, 5,000 at Shanahan, 5,000 at Orange, okay? So if the internet goes down, one comes from Meta, one comes from a private source. If we lose either one of them, in most cases, tech all gets an alert, but nobody else knows. So that's nice. Internet might be a little slower, but things keep moving. So internet connections, and started application review process. So all those apps, I mentioned one roster, and tying all the apps together, and getting students on there, but what are those apps? So we started taking a deep dive into what the students and the staff are using. And we went through, and in the beginning, we just tossed them all in there, you know? We said, what are you using? Okay, we put them in there. But now, this was time for us to take a step back and grade every single one of them. And it was a long, long process, but we wanted to make sure, things like student privacy, what are those vendors doing with the student data? Do we have control over it? Can we delete it? And a slew of other things, that all those applications get graded against some rubric. Again, hitting highlights here, again, the gray years, this is where tech started supporting, we predominantly supported staff, but then, this was the shift, where we had students calling, we had parents calling, we were supporting their home wifi, you know, why can't I connect? So that was a biggie. Along the same timeframe too, we got ECF funds from the state, emergency connectivity funds, and we use those to put outdoor wireless. So all of the common areas, out of the high schools and middle schools have wireless, all their stadiums have wireless now, even the middle schools, and all the common areas in the elementaries, playgrounds and stuff. And it was kinda cool to drive through, you know, during these times, and see kids with their Chromebooks or with their laptops, sitting out there, doing their work on a nice day.
Interesting thing is, we've had some vandalism, every once in a while, we have vandalism, and we've caught kids, because their phones connect to our network.
Oh, secret's out now. All the kids watching, now they know. Turn off your phone.
Do you want me to hit them?
I don't know. I thought it was an interesting fact.
It is. We have, many, we have.
It's unfortunate, but.
During this pandemic time, we streamed over 600 athletic and academic events. 600. We streamed absolutely everything. And so kudos, you know, kudos to the team, the tech team, I mean, not just with this, but in all these projects in general. Also, again, nothing too crazy here, but we replaced the phone system. We had a voicemail that was failing, it was more expensive to replace just that than replace a whole system. Kinda crazy, but that's how it worked out. Started the smartboard replacement project, you'll see, you know, the interactive panels that are going into rooms, this is that process. The smartboards, the days are over of those, and, you know, now we're moved on to this technology in the classroom. We added cloud storage for our backups. So I mentioned the data centers and the data spread across all those. Now we're also sending that data to the cloud, so if we do have a ransom attack, an issue, we're able to bring that data back and restore our systems. Implemented online alert. So that is real-time alerts of student activity online. So if they're doing something inappropriate, that sends an email to the principal and tech, so they can address it. In many cases, it's just they're doing some research, but the principal's going, they dig into it, and take care of it if needed. And with that data, we were saying, okay, maybe we should do something, student safety online, and we bought some resources to throw against that problem. So really, our media, our library media specialists, they are, right now, they're taking kind of the dive into that and introducing that to our kids, so. Alright, getting here to the end. Device update, roughly 22,000 devices for staff and students. And in general, that's a 13% increase over the years. Every year, 13%, 13%. And what that enables us to do is really two things, right? The number we're at right now is a good support number for us, okay? Tech can keep up with the issues, and those devices are a variety of different devices. So it would be easy for us to sit back and say, alright, we're all Chromebook, alright? Or we're all Windows, or we're all Mac, we're all one ecosystem, but we want to give our students a variety of experiences with technology. So you give Chromebook, Windows, Mac, iOS, Apple, and Android. So they see it all, in a variety of different ways. But what else, the other side to this too, is there's a support piece, but there is a slew of online testing, more and more and more, that's getting added. Not necessarily added, but it's becoming online, it's going online. ACT, you know, the Ohio State tests, all of those. So we're at a spot where we are no longer having to truck devices from one school to another. We always had damage, we always had issues. We got it done, we got the testing done, but now we're at a point where we do not have to do that. We're at this nice balance of, we can support them well, and we have testing taken care of, okay? Future projects. We're gonna continue the classroom modification, modernization project, that's interactive panels in there, replacing smartboards and such. We're gonna keep enhancing our cybersecurity, keeping things patched, firewalls updated, and replaced as necessary. Online safety's gonna continue, that I mentioned earlier. This kind of, the next one's a biggie. Finalizing and implementing our three-year instructional technology plan. So that is what's going on in the classroom. That plan, right here. Hopefully, we can come back at another time and dive into that. And it's really going to unify and transform what we do, what we can do in the classroom. We've got a network refresh coming up, that replacement that I mentioned way back when, was it an hour ago that I mentioned that? It's, you know, fast forward seven years, alright? And it's time. So that'll be in the summer of '23, the same summer we reopen Middle School 6. And then, of course, we have devices to refresh, as we always do, that fall under the four-year replacement cycle. Alright. The end.
I do have a question. To satisfy my curiosity, the health forms. So now, we have submitted health forms online. So let's say there's a student that has a bee allergy, and they're playing baseball, and they get stung by a bee. How does that, how does the right person get that information quickly?
Yeah, all those medical alerts are stored in Power School. And there is a flag when they log in, and all the nurses.
But what about the coaches? So it's nighttime baseball game. How does the coach know that a kid is anaphylactic to a bee sting? Do they, are they given something ahead of time?
Well, in most cases, coaches like that, like have, they know about it, right? The parents have given them that, they have given them the notification to say, hey, be aware of this, if this happens, you know, they're definitely allergic to whatever, you know, what do you mean?
Trainers review all those forms and let coaches know.
Okay. And then, in regards to, you mentioned ransom attacks. Have very many public school districts in Ohio been under ransomware attack?
More than you'd think, yeah, yeah. There are some that were just crippled. There were some universities that were crippled, some local ones that I won't mention. But yes, yes, it is, and very serious, and we're taking reasonable precautions.
Thank you.
To, to make sure it's taken care of, for sure.
I just have one quick. With the, the online safety training for the students, what is the primary focus of that? Is it differentiating between, you know, websites that are scams or not scams? Is it, you know, looking at, you know, potential contacts from unwanted individuals? What are, what are really the high points that we're looking at?
Yeah, it really depends on the level. So you'll see those kinds of things at more of the, you know, middle school and up kind of level. Um, you know, what, you know, websites, um, what phishing, phishing looks like. Um, and we also train our staff in that, I mentioned student staff, but, um, you know, what does an email that's phishing look like? What are the clues for that? Um, online safety, chat rooms, do that. And, and the important thing with all that is, you know, we, we create these environments, we have closed environments for kids. If you're going to make a mistake, make it in this closed, safe environment, right, before you get, you know, um, you know, online. So the earlier we can teach them, uh, the better.
Questions about your devices, both teacher and student. Are students, students don't take home district devices, do they?
They, in, in certain circumstances, they can. It's, it's not widespread, but, but they can. And we also provide, um, uh, internet hotspots, uh, for, for students in need.
Okay. What is your life cycle for these devices? How long do you figure they last?
In, in general, we try to stick to four years. Um, so in, in some cases, uh, you know, we're able to push them to five. Um, but we try to, we, we've noticed, um, from, again, from our ticketing system, we can tell, well, how old was that device? And then we can, uh, from date of purchase. And we can look at the number of tickets and it's, you know, hardly any tickets, hardly any tickets, hardly, and then as they get older, you know, things start to fail and you see those tickets. So that's kind of why and how we settled on four years.
Are you having trouble meeting demand for devices?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, buildings always, always ask, always ask for more, for, for whatever.
So what do you, do you have an inventory? Do you do just in time, or what does that look like?
Um, well, we don't have a whole, we don't have a ton in, in stock, uh, in, in reserve. Um, so, but we do have enough to take care of, um, the classroom. You know, if, if one breaks, a kid drops it, um, we just give, we give them a replacement, and then we send that broken one off to repair. Uh, there was a time when we repaired them ourselves, but then it just became too much, uh, to be able to do that on our own.
So maybe it's the same question, asked differently. You get 22,000 devices today, how many are you refreshing every year?
Oh, that's a good question. So, um, in the beginning, um, we were, we had these big years, uh, where we were, um, replacing all, I mean, 8,000, you know, devices, right? So what we did was, over the years, we kind of, kind of cut back on that a little bit. So it's, it's taken us a while to get to our four-year lifecycle. And so the, the short answer is, right now, we're at, right around 4,600 a year flat, um, is what we replace. Um, and, and again, it fluctuates a little bit, but on, on average, and that ends up being around our, you know, for the four years, um, uh, you know, rough numbers, I mean, that's 16, 16,000, all right, over the four years. But, you know, again, that number fluctuates and that gets us up to around 22.
And then you mentioned a single data center at Shanahan and multiple data centers now one at Orange, one at Liberty. Um, what are your thoughts on on-prem versus cloud? And is there an opportunity to drive more efficiency by renting a cloud-based infrastructure versus owning on-prem data centers?
Um, yeah, I mean, it, so, um, so Web Shanahan, that's our active one. Orange is kind of our standby, and we don't populate that with, all, everything's virtual nowadays. So, uh, that means there's really a handful of physical computers, um, and within those are many running, um, so they're, they're that powerful. So the Orange data center is our, kind of our hot standby. We always have a backup there that we could bring up in case something happens, um, uh, at Shanahan. Liberty is just backup. Um, we, we can bring them up there, but it would take more time, uh, to do that. And then we have our cloud storage, which we take all our backups and we move them up in the cloud. So it would be, uh, it would be a big undertaking to move all of those, um, up to the cloud, all right? So, um, right now, we can, even if we had to bring them down now from the cloud, it would take us some time if we lost Liberty, Orange, and Shanahan. Um, but cost savings wise, you know, our, our local SQL servers and, and those running in the cloud and security, and those are some of the things we're working through. Uh, and, but some of ours are already up there, our active directory. Uh, that's the, um, system we use for most of our single sign-on. Um, all of that has already been moved, um, up there. So, um, so it doesn't really depend on us working here. You know, all of our data centers up, we could still, um, in the, uh, still operate some in, in the cloud. Many of our web apps will continue to work, um, because all of those are hosted, uh, externally. So they would authenticate against what we've already put in the cloud, and many of those applications would continue to function. We would lose, um, uh, like local storage, like a lot of our classrooms use local storage. And so that would be a tough one to move, um, because if it's in the cloud, they gotta bring it up, bring it down, bring it up, bring it down, uh, which then increase bandwidth. So.
Is that like a thin client? Kind of was what you're talking about, old school thin client?
Uh, yeah, thin clients, um, um, so they, uh, th- those are really just a virtualized environment, right? We, we create a desktop in, uh, uh, the servers, and then we have a small client or reuse an old computer and point it to those images, and it pulls them down and it runs them locally. So. Yeah, I, I haven't had the best, uh, luck, and, and it's really about the end user. Once you get them, like most people, they, they have these quirky little things about them that, you know, tried and true computer, uh, you know, keeps on, keeps on ticking. So.
Well, I can say I appreciate the forms.
Me too.
Yeah.
But I will say, as a parent of multiples, if there was an option to say this is a multiple, so then all that information can carry over to the next kid.
Yeah. So, so our, our, our effort for that was, there's a button in there, right? So like I had, uh, so Connor and Avery, my kids, um, I would complete Connor's first, and then there, when I, uh, switch to Avery's in the tab, there is a copy data from, and it doesn't get it all. Um, but it gets some of the biggies and addresses and things like that. So if I change one thing, it changes it in, um, in the other. But, uh, yeah, I get your point. Yeah. As much as we can say, you know, ditto and make it happen for the next one, we, we want to do that. Yeah. And, and that's getting an upgrade. Um, it's probably something I should put here on, uh, future projects, but that's getting a, um, a facelift as well. So.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say thanks, Rob. We, obviously, digital conversion was a goal I set in 2015, 16, coming in, um, to this whole endeavor and, of, obviously, support of the board and, and for his work. And we are in an infinitely better place technologically than we were seven years ago. Um, and I have great faith that we will continue on a really good path. Um, it was always the thing, technology was always a black hole of money, just pouring money into it. People were very hesitant to do it 20 years ago, and we kind of slowly dipped into the technology world, but you just can't, and you don't know how good the, the system is until you don't have it. It's kind of like insurance. You don't know how good it is until you need it. And, um, we've got a reliable, fast network and a responsive technology team that does a great job. So thank you.
Yeah, we try. Thank you.
And we couldn't have made it through the pandemic if those upgrades hadn't occurred.
Yeah, it was, it was, you know, some luck, some timing, you know, who anticipated that happening. And luckily, some things that we put in place really helped us, um, you know, to get through that, you know, and, and helped our teachers, you know, through provisioning and things like that. So, yeah. So apologize for the, uh, the, the long, long presentation, but, um, I wanted to make sure I gave it its due due.
You haven't been here for a while, so.
That's, yeah, so, does that give me, give me a while then?
No, we're still going to give you a hard time.
Sorry, Chris, you go.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. So next up is Krista Davis, our Chief Communications Officer, Strategic Planner.
All right, good evening, everyone. And I was thinking the exact same thing, Mr. Rafe, that, you know, we're going to talk about 12 goals in the strategic plan, and that was all the information that he just shared, that Mr. Sexton just shared, is just one of, of 12 of our, of our goals. So it's really remarkable to, to hear all the work that's been done there. So the last we talked about the strategic plan was back on April 4th during your work session. And we, as a leadership team, are ready to share, uh, where we are with the plan and the progress we've made. So quick overview, um, of our process. Back in 2016, when we really started, uh, talking about this as a leadership team, we started with the mission, vision, and values. We confirmed that the mission was relevant, and I think we all agree still today that it is extremely relevant. Uh, the vision statement was a large paragraph. We broke that down into a more, the more succinct statement that it is today. And then there were some additional important pieces in that initial vision statement that we wanted to keep, and we were able to morph those into our value statements that we have today. So then, in around 2017, or 2017, we, uh, came up with the strategic plan that we've been working from since, over the past five years, with our four priorities, our 12 goals, and many, many tactics, um, behind that. Work plans have been created to follow that plan. And at five years, we decided that it was time to really look ahead, uh, prepare for the future, think about, uh, the plan that we have and what could, what could change from there. So we looked at our continuing opportunities and challenges and, um, evaluated the fact that in the last year, we became the fourth largest district in the state, that with our ever-increasing size, we continue to aspire to maintain the concept of big feeling small in everything that we do while maintaining our educational excellence with a mind to fiscal responsibility. So we've considered growth, continued accelerated growth, uh, timing for future schools and support buildings, timing for future ballot issues, increased technological needs, which definitely covered tonight, equity and inclusion efforts, student well-being, leadership and succession planning, policy review, competitive hiring in a tight job market, changes in federal and state funding and mandates, and pandemic learning gaps. So the first thing I'm going to show you is our revised, what we call our one-pager. Um, so we took the mission, vision, and values and put them at the top of the page. They remain the same, but we really feel that they are overarching, uh, guides, kind of the umbrella to everything that we do. And then, um, we revised some of the goals and let the strategic priorities remain the same. So students and stakeholders, resource stewardship, internal processes, learning and organizational development all stay the same. Uh, in this document, we then thought it was very important to frame the plan with the portrait of a learner dispositions, that purposeful, resilient, curious, and kind, those things that we believe that every learner, adult, child alike, should, um, work towards, uh, demonstrating in all that they do. So that was important to us, and I think it bears, um, importance to mention that we spent a lot of time talking about the center of this document. We talked about the Olin Tangi experience, that all of these things that we're working on really lend itself to that unique Olin Tangi experience. We talked about flourishing here and that tagline in that this also helps everyone in our organization flourish here. But ultimately, we settled on strategic plan because that's what this is. And we know that as we work towards accomplishing everything within this plan, we are creating that Olin Tangi experience. We are creating that opportunity for people to flourish here. We are going to walk through the four quadrants of the strategic plan and highlight what we have updated insofar as the language. So the goals alleviate barriers to learning. We kept the same because we still feel that that's very important to alleviate all barriers to learning. I think sometimes we've said alleviate non-academic barriers to learning, and yes, that's still very important, but also any barriers to learning. Um, we changed the, uh, community involvement and partnerships from, uh, we changed rather from engagement and relationships to involvement and partnerships. So we thought by fine-tuning those words, we would really hit at what we want to do to involve more community members and partnerships, which could be businesses and, um, other entities within the district. And then promote a culture of inclusive excellence. We felt that that was very important to remain the same. And we'll talk a little bit more about, um, that here in a second. And resource stewardship, uh, from your feedback during the April 4th session, we changed maximize investments in revenue to optimize investments in revenue because, as you mentioned, um, we are limited by state requirements and our revenue is finite. And so it's important to optimize that, uh, as we work forward. And then model fiscal, fiscal responsibility and transparency and manage assets wisely remained the same. Obviously, those are still very important. And internal processes, before, we said implement a digital conversion. And so I think that Mr. Sexton set us up perfectly for, uh, talking about this goal, advancing our digital environment. And so this is including that digital conversion, which has been done, and well, there's still more to do. We really think it's important to talk about the whole digital environment in our district. And that even, uh, talks about di- digital citizenship as well. Um, we went from expanding our talent management strategy to enhancing our talent management strategy. We feel like we have done a lot of work to expand it, now we want to take it to the next level. Same thing with, uh, strive for a culture of, of operational excellence. Now we would like to exemplify a culture of operational excellence. Again, a lot of things have been worked on in this area, and so therefore, we'd like to move to exemplifying. Under learning and organizational development, we switched the order that these fall in, and I'll talk about the brand last, but ensure mastery of learning, we moved it closer to students and stakeholders, but the verbiage is the same. Foster leadership development is also the same. We still feel that those are relevant and work to be done in those areas. And then the brand, um, from, I establishing our brand identity, which we've done, um, the conversation that you all had related to our values really, uh, tied into this, we thought. And so we talked about elevating our brand, which our values are part of our brand, and they are that anchor back. I think, Mr. Lester, you used those words, um, in April, on April 4th, that they, you know, our decision should anchor back to our values. And we see that fitting within our brand. It's who we are, it's what we value. So those are the four sections. Um, we had then, after we worked through, um, with Dr. Weiss, we went to, or we, we went to, um, talk about definitions as a group. Um, and I wanted to just point out that you talked, um, in the April 4th meeting about work sessions on some of these goals specifically, that you thought you, we could have in-depth work session conversations about a goal at a time. So I think that still should be something we can consider as we work for, move forward and with our work in these areas. So we took your conversation from the 4th and our conversations from the 5th the next day, and we began to work on definitions. And you have a draft of those, uh, hard copy that I put in front of you, but I thought we would just spend a little time covering a few of them. So what we tried to do is succinctly define what we mean when we say alleviate barriers to learning, promote a culture of inclusive excellence, what we mean when we say each of these 12 goals. And so we all have a common knowledge, a And so we all have a common knowledge, a common vocabulary, and an understanding when we think about each of these goals. And so we tried to bullet point them, to have them be clear and concise and easy to read. So just with this one, alleviating barriers to learning, we will target prevention and intervention to mitigate distractions to learning and support and emphasize the development of the whole child. So obviously, that's not everything related to alleviating barriers to learning, but that gives a nice overview and definition to what we mean when we talk about that. Same thing with promote a culture of inclusive excellence. We will grow our organizational culture into one where all individuals have a sense of belonging, and this goes right back to our conversation on the 4th. We will ensure that policy structures, processes, and educational opportunities are free from bias and discrimination and affirm the rich diversity of our community. But that also, we're moving forward, using those as our guardrails. And then I won't read these two to you, but I just shared two more with elevate our brand and advance our digital environment, as to that, these are goals that we wordsmithed, or refreshed the goal, and then really dug into what that means when we say we're elevating our brand and advancing our digital environment. So what is next? We are going to start talking about the creation of work plans that are aligned with the strategic plan and what those look like. We're going to talk about a development of metrics, an overarching metric system. Every department has a way of measuring the work that they're doing, and there's, I think it's important to note, there's the everyday work and there's the strategic plan work. And they intersect, overlap, but sometimes they're separate too. So we're going to really work at an easy overarching metric system that can easily share with everyone how we're doing, what progress we're making. And then we will be determining a report out cadence so that we know collectively, as a Board of Education and a leadership team, when we will be coming back and giving an update using that overarching metric system and our, and our reporting methods so that it's consistent and you know what to expect. That is all that I have. What questions do you have?
Questions from Ms. Davis? Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. So that concludes our discussion items. So Mr. Ratliff, would you like to present the treasurer's action items, A through E?
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, I didn't hear you.
What's that?
I didn't hear you, sir.
Would you want to present the treasurer's action items, please?
Yes, the treasurer brings full treasurer's items, A to E. A, amended appropriations. B, approved board meeting minutes from March 9th and 24th. C, to approve donations. D, for the bond issuance, and E, the ORC 5705 payment.
Okay, could I have a motion for treasurer's action items?
So moved.
Second. Second, please. Any discussion on the treasurer's action items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, please. The only discussion will be our next meeting is May 12th. Is that right?
Yes.
I think you had to do your president's report. May 12th, and we'll be back at the administration building. All right? So please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, please. The only discussion will be our next meeting is May 12th. Is that right?
Yes.
I think you had to do your president's report. May 12th, and we'll be back at the administration building. All right? So please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and good night, everybody.
Good work.